Good morning. Today's meeting of the Board of Supervisors for the University of Louisiana System is now called to order. Carol, if you could please call the room.
Mr. Barry Busada.
Here.
Mr. Steve Davison.
Here.
Mr. Ronald Hogan. Mr. Lee Jackson. Dr. Joe Leatherman. Mr. Keith Myers.
Here.
Ms. Maria Natcheva. Dr. John Noble. Mr. Al Perkins. Mr. Dana Peterson. Ms. Elizabeth Pierre.
Here.
Mr. Mark Romero.
Here.
Ms. Christine Russell. Mr. Robert Salim. Mr. Brad Stevens.
Here.
Ms. Julie Stokes. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Carol. Before President Gallo begins our meeting with a prayer, let's please observe a moment of silence in remembrance of Dr. Margarita Perez, Dean of Students at the University of Louisiana Lafayette who regrettably passed away yesterday evening. I also would ask that while Dr. Noble was fighting the good fight, we keep him in our thoughts and prayers as well. After the invocation, we'll have the pledge and Maria Natcheva will lead us in that.
And I'd also ask for a moment of silence for Captain Toby Watney, who's a member of our University of Louisiana Maritime Academy Advisory Board, who recently passed, so we could have a moment of silence for he and Dr. Perez as well. Heavenly Father, we thank you. We thank you for safe travel of all of us coming here today. Lord, we thank you for our 83,000 students. Lord, we thank you for all of our faculty and staff, all of our community members who are part of our university. Lord, we just thank you right now that you've given us the opportunity to change lives, to impart on our students the ability to change the trajectories of their lives, to make generational changes, Lord, and providing opportunities. Lord, we just thank you that you give us the opportunity to do this work every day. And so as we enter into this meeting, Lord, we ask that you would guide this board and guide us in all our decisions. And when it's all over, that you would give us safe travel back to our respective locations. So we love you, thank you, we praise you. So in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, in two republics of which we stand, one nation under God, in Judaism, in the religion against Israel.
This morning, we're delighted to welcome Mr. Ronald Hogan as a new board member. Mr. Hogan was appointed to serve Congressional District Four and is completing the unexpired term of Supervisor Salter. If you would, Supervisor Hogan, join Dr. Gallo in the front of the dice and he'll administer your oath. Thank you Supervisor Hogan for your commitment to serve and if you would, maybe share a few words at this time.
It's my honor and privilege to serve on the Board of Supervisors and I do truly believe that this is a calling from the Lord and I will faithfully and fully utilize this opportunity to serve the UL system to the best of my ability. And I look forward to working with each of the board members here.
Thank you. Consideration today to approve the minutes of our August 28th board meeting. If I could have a motion and a second to approve. Moved by Supervisor Jackson, seconded by Supervisor Busada. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We'll meet as a committee to hold, so we need a motion and a second to conduct business in this manner. Moved by Supervisor Stokes.
Second Stevens.
Second Stevens. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Pierre will now address items that are under the Academic and Student Affairs Committee.
Yes, good morning. We have three, we have five actions on the Academic and Student Affairs Committee Agenda. Dr. Janine O'Rourke, Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs will provide the report. Dr. O'Rourke.
Good morning. Thank you Supervisor Pierre. Good morning Chair Romero, President Gallo and all members of the board that are here with us this morning. We do have five agenda items and I will walk you through each briefly. Agenda items E1 through E3 all pertain to Grambling State University. E1 is a request for approval to name the College of Business, the Thomas and Joyce Morehead College of Business and Entrepreneurship, and to authorize President Lamel to approve the final version of any related items. At this time, I invite President Lamel to the testimony table so that he can provide information about this naming opportunity.
Good morning. President Gallo and Chair Romero and members of the board. I am pleased to have joined me the Dean of the College of Business, Dr. Derek Warren, as we discuss a phenomenal opportunity. In our fraternity, Cap Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated, our motto is "Achievement in Every Field of Human Endeavor", and the Moreheads certainly exemplify that motto. Thomas and Joyce Morehead have invested in Grambling State University for several years, and this next level investment represents their legacy and commitment to student success. When we think about the College of Business and their journey, it's anchored in humble beginnings from Tom Morehead's upbringing in Monroe, Louisiana, to his journey at Grambling State University. Through the arc of their professional careers, Joyce Morehead, a legal scholar, has worked with organizations like the NAACP and continues to contribute philanthropic commitment and time. Thomas Morehead, in the luxury space of real estate as well as automobiles, becoming the first African American to own a Rolls Royce dealership. And so we are excited about this opportunity to represent their legacy at Grambling State University with the naming of the Tom and Joyce Morehead College of Business and Entrepreneurship. And I will turn it over to our dean to tell you some exciting news about our students and the work of the College of Business.
Thank you, President Lamel. Good morning to President, Assistant President Gallo, Chair Romero, to this distinguished board and to everyone who is in attendance at today's meeting. Today is truly a transformative moment for the Grambling State University College of Business. Through the extraordinary generosity of Thomas and Joyce Morehead, this gift will uplift our students. It will energize our faculty, staff and every component and everyone who works in our college as well as transform the Jacob T. Stewart Building through facility enhancement and beyond. At our College of Business, we'd like to say that we stand on business. And as such, this gift helps us to continue to amplify that vision, to continue to grow and create academic excellence across the academy and beyond. And to the Moreheads and to everyone who played a role in this tremendous offering and gift, we say thank you.
Any questions from board members? Congratulations on the honoring of your individuals. Moving forward, we have agenda item E2, which is also a request from Grambling State to enter into a memorandum of understanding with North Carolina Central University, a public HBCU located in Durham, North Carolina. The proposed collaborative agreement between the two institutions will enhance student awareness of graduate opportunities at NCCU and provide scholarship opportunities for eligible Grambling State students. And E3 is a request from GSU to confer an honorary doctorate of humane letters to our very own Ms. Elizabeth Pierre. What a wonderful way to honor such an accomplished individual and a devoted board member. And President Lamel, would you like to add any additional comments to that?
Yes. I'm excited to continue in the space of honoring legacy and commitment to our state. From Palmetto, Louisiana, to the University of Louisiana Lafayette, to her JD at Southern University Law, to her practice in Pierre and Pierre, to her service to this board and our students and our state, and her former service as Chair. Grambling State University is excited to bestow the honor of an honorary doctorate upon board member Elizabeth Pierre.
And we'll have an unofficial agenda item. Dr. Connie Walton toward the back, who serves as Provos at Grambling State University. It is her birthday. And so if we all can applaud her on another round around the sun, I think she is certainly deserving and it serves as a wonderful leader at Grambling and it's just a, such a professional that I have enjoyed every moment I've worked with Dr. Walton over the years. So happy birthday, Dr. Walton. Thank you. Moving along, item E4 is a request from McNeese State University on behalf of the Intercollegiate Consortium for a Master of Science in Nursing, referred to as ICMSN, and its member institutions for approval to offer a postmaster certificate in family nurse practitioner. The UL System Strategic Plan identifies operational excellence and efficiencies as a priority area. And the ICMSN is an excellent example of efficiency in delivering graduate nursing education in a coordinated effort. With that in mind, I've invited representatives with ICMSN to briefly present to you today, since many of you may not be familiar with this consortium that is powered by McNeese, Southeastern, UL Lafayette and Nichols. So at this time, I'm going to go excuse myself and you all can come and take over the testimony table.
Is your microphone on?
Not. Did y'all hear? Okay. So.
Want to make sure that the broadcast could pick you up.
Okay. Um, so. Advance the slide, please. And again. So our objectives today are to provide an overview for the ICMSN and to describe the postmaster certificate for family nurse practitioner proposal. Advance the slide. So the ICMSN is an academic partnership that's designed to prepare advanced practice nurses and nurse educators through a model of shared governance, resources and curriculum. Advance the slide, please. The history started back 35 years ago with a grant that Southeastern Louisiana University obtained to develop a shared consortium. The first students graduated in 1992. Over the years, the concentrations that have been offered, the universities who have participated have varied. So this is an abbreviated timeline. In 1993, they really looked at how it was organized and revised, the MOU or MOA, so that made it clear that the consortium was responsible for curriculum, for record keeping and for certification of students for graduation. In 1996, the nurse practitioner at that time tract was added. And by 2005, the nursing education tract was offered. And in 2006, the psychiatric mental health tract was started. Advance the slide, please. The initial accreditation through CCNE, which is our nursing program creditor, was obtained in 2008. In 2011, due to a change in how nurse practitioners were credentialed, they phased out the adult health concentration and added the family nurse practitioner. In 2012, Nichols joined the consortium and we started a postmaster certificate is as a postmasters mental health nurse practitioner. And then in 2023, we were reaccredited for the MSN as well as the postmaster certificate in psychiatric mental health as a mental health nurse practitioner. Advance the slide, please. I wanted to give you an overview of the overall consortium enrollment. This is across all four universities. There's 400 FNP students. There's 164 psych mental health nurse practitioner students and 34 nursing education students for a total degree seeking enrollment of 598. In the postmasters psychiatric mental health certificate, there are 41 students. Advance the slide, please. The graduates that we have, this is for two semesters, fall 2024 and spring 2025. There were 99 FNP graduates, 35 psych NP graduates, six nursing education graduates for a total of 122 degrees awarded across the four schools of the consortium. There were 22 postmaster psych, postmaster certificates awarded. Now, along with this, I realized I didn't really put any of our other outcomes in this presentation and I should have. So we have what I think is excellent outcomes in terms of retention of students and certification rates for the nurse practitioners after they graduate. If a student can complete the first 12 hours successfully, 98 to 100% of them will complete the program. If they complete the program, the nurse practitioners, which is either family or psych mental health, 98 to 100% of them will be certified, that will pass a certification exam and go on to be licensed as a nurse practitioner. So, you know, those are awesome. I can't believe I left it off the presentation, but yeah. So the way the structure works is a series of committees. SINC is the committee that includes the academic provosts and the deans. They meet annually to, for a review and update of what's going on, what we see as concerns moving forward in the programs and what our successes are and where our challenges are. I would say that the work of the consortium occurs in the dean's advisory council. That group includes the deans and it includes the ICMSN coordinators. An ICMSN coordinator is a nurse that is a faculty member that is designated by each university to coordinate that program. They do that using a committee structure that includes a coordinating committee, which is all of them, as well as a curriculum committee, which one of the coordinators will chair, a program evaluation committee, again chaired by a coordinator, and communication committee, again chaired by a coordinator. Each university has a member on each of these committees and decisions are made, everyone has to be at the table when a decision is made. We like to think we do it by consensus and usually we do. If someone is, we have a lot of diversity of thought, okay? So we try to make decisions by consensus, but if not, we'll vote and sometimes you win and sometimes you don't. The NP concentration leads up there are on the curriculum committee. That is an accreditation requirement for nurse practitioner programs. If they designate a nurse practitioner who is the lead of that concentration. The final piece of the structure is that there's a graduate faculty organization of which all faculty who teach in the consortium are a part of. This committee or this group meets once a semester. They talk about the work of that semester, what's been going on, and they also usually have some professional development that's related to online learning or a clinical area that everyone would be a part of. Next slide, please. So the sharing model, you know, earlier when I gave you the definition, the areas we share, governance, resources and curriculum. So I wanted to give you some examples of that. So into governance, we use bylaws as structure and I brought them if anybody's really interested in looking at them. We have bylaws for the graduate faculty organization, bylaws for DAC and bylaws for SINC. All universities must be present at all meetings. The committee chairs are rotated among all of the schools. The lead dean is rotated, so if we were here next year, you would see someone else. And then the faculty organization has a chair of which the faculty elect. Okay? The resources that we share are accreditation expenses, which can be significant. We have shared in other ways too, for example. before the 2020s, we had a research conference that all four universities participated in through their honor society for nursing. So we're working on getting that back up, which will include participants from all of the consortium schools. Another example where we share is syllabi and the curriculum. The curriculum is shared. If you take Nursing 500 at McNeese, 500, 600, of course, everyone has their own way of naming numbers for courses. If you take that at McNeese, it is the exact same course that you take at UL Lafayette, Southeastern, or Nichols. So those are the issues that the curriculum committee work on. The shared syllabi, they're all the same. The only thing that's different is the faculty who is assigned to that course. Now, I want to go into a little more detail in that because sometimes faculty hold their syllabi as very close. The things that are the same are the course description, the student learning outcomes, how the course is evaluated, the course content. Faculty have control over how that is delivered. And one thing I haven't said is this is an online program, okay? These are online. So for example, I teach the graduate-level statistics course in this curriculum. The course description, the student learning outcomes, and how the course is evaluated, and the content, and the textbook are the same across all schools. What is different is how you deliver it. And in the, so for statistics, 40% of the grade is based on assignments, 40% is quizzes, and 20% is a project at the end. The quizzes may vary in how those quizzes are delivered. The assignments may vary in how they're delivered. But regardless, they meet the student learning outcomes. The final project can vary too, but it doesn't. So that, that's how we roll, okay? The PMC as a family nurse practitioner, I mean, honestly, I don't know why we didn't do this before, but we're getting it done now, and what it is, I think it's going to be awesome because it's a very efficient way to allow nurse practitioners to add a certification to their degree. It consists of four existing courses that are taught by each university each semester for MSN students. Existing faculty will be used for didactic portion of the course. If there's clinical involved, which three of the four courses are clinical, the clinical faculty, which are hired on a semester-to-semester basis, can be hired depending upon the enrollment that's needed for that semester for that school. After passing the national certification exam for FNP, those graduates will be licensed by the Louisiana State Board of Nursing as family nurse practitioners. This postmaster certificate is unique from our other one that we offer in that any nurse with a master of science degree in nursing already can apply for admission. However, it depends on what that MSN, you know, what they have studied in their previous MSN. A gap analysis will be done by the coordinators, by the faculty, to determine if the MSN included prerequisite courses that are needed to prepare for a family nurse practitioner. And basically, the ones we're looking for would be advanced pathophysiology, advanced physical assessment, advanced pharmacology, which are taught by each university each semester. So for example, if we have especially a consortium graduate who is a psych mental health nurse practitioner with a master's degree, and it's recent, that we know what those courses are. So that person would be admitted. We'd be thrilled to have them because we know what their master's included, and they would take those four courses and then certify to be a family nurse practitioner. On the other hand, if we have someone who's been out of school for a long time, and/or their master's degree is in nursing education, or informatics, or a general master's degree, they would, you know, they would have to take those three advanced courses in order to be ready for the clinical courses that make up the bulk of the certificate. And I think that's my last slide. We'll be glad to answer any questions that y'all might have. Y'all don't have any question? I brought my whole team here.
You did such a thorough job of delivering, so thank you.
One thing, one thing about the consortium, everybody looks at everything, and we have a lot of diversity of thought, and everybody signs off on everything. So a lot of people have looked at this presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, as you can imagine, when the consortium was created many years ago, and it continues to be a heavy lift when you're dealing with individuals that sometimes want to work within their own silos. And so as we're looking at efficiencies and how to better offer academic programs that will produce graduates that meet the needs of our state in regards to business and industry, we do need to become a little more adept and collaborative. And so this is a wonderful example that we hope to emulate in other academic discipline spaces. So stay tuned on that. Okay, well, moving forward to our final agenda item, E5 is a request from Northwestern State University to establish the Louisiana Center for Agricultural Resources and Technology. We do not have a lot of centers that come forward, and with the hope of this to bloom into a center of excellence by the Board of Regents in a couple of years to come. I did want to have the opportunity for Drs. Hondal and Lemoine with Northwestern to provide you with a little update of what they're wanting to pursue with today's approval of the center and what they hope to achieve in the coming years. So if I can invite them to the table, please, and of course, President Genovese.
Good morning, President Gallo, Chair Romero, and members of the board, and we thank you for the opportunity to present to you an overview of the center. Four years ago, in the effort to bring together and create opportunities for more interdisciplinary research and collaboration in our science fields, we created the School of STEM. And almost immediately, we saw a lot of synergy occurring between those faculties, and that created some momentum externally in our community, in our region. One of the very first entities that approached us was the Kane River Waterway. They needed our drone technology to help them do some research in areas along the river that were not accessible in any other way except from the air. And once that took off and was successful, we just saw a lot of continued requests across the entire School of STEM. And so we took a step back and said, we need to figure out how to pull this all together so it is effective and efficient, and that we're able to accomplish for our external and internal partners what needs to happen. And that's what brings us here today with the Center for Agricultural Resources and Technology. I'm going to ask Dr. Fran Lemoine, who serves as the dean of the College of Arts and Sciences, to give you an overview of the center and the program and some of the internal and external partners. Dr. Lemoine also serves as a full professor in the School of STEM in biology and microbiology.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to visit with you about this proposal. Northwestern State University seeks to develop the Louisiana Center for Agricultural Resources and Technology. The mission of this center will be to utilize areas of strength within the School of STEM, specifically biology, veterinary science, chemistry, physics, engineering technology, computer science, and drone technology to advance agricultural technology in the state of Louisiana to solve problems associated with agricultural and natural resources. CART's mission is going to focus on three specific major pillars. It will focus on the development of devices, machines, materials, processes, and educational practices that will improve agricultural safety, productivity, efficiency, and economy across the state of Louisiana and beyond while minimizing ecological and environmental impacts. It will also focus on improving disaster preparedness and responsiveness. And finally, it will focus on developing technologies associated with sustainable practices necessary for personal, small, medium, and large-scale agricultural operations. If I can have the next slide, please. With a robust education rooted in work-based learning, CART will complete its mission by achieving the following objectives: Establishing partnerships with local, regional, state, and national businesses and agencies focused on agricultural practices. Sponsoring activities and outreach events that will equip the public with the knowledge necessary to initiate and sustain agricultural practices. Leading the state in the development of innovative ways to utilize drone technology in modern agricultural practices and disaster responsiveness. Conducting research into the design of devices and machines needed to perform the work of modern agriculture in the most efficient, effective, and safest manner possible. Providing computer-based modeling and data analytic services to improve agricultural efficiencies. And producing undergraduate and graduate students with work-based experiences, preparing them to enter the workforce and enhance the agricultural landscape of Louisiana to specifically reverse the impacts of the food desert in which we reside. Next slide, please. As a regional university, Northwestern State's mission extends beyond traditional academics to encompass the economic, cultural, and technological advancement of northern Louisiana. This role and scope are especially evident in CART's strategic focus on agriculture, a cornerstone of Louisiana's economy and identity. CART will support the role, scope, and mission of Northwestern State in multiple ways. By establishing partnerships with local, regional, state, and national businesses and agencies, Northwestern State's CART will act as a bridge between academia and industry. With a strong commitment to community engagement, Northwestern State's CART will sponsor outreach events and public activities that will equip citizens with the knowledge and tools needed to initiate and sustain agricultural practices. These efforts will not only promote food security, but will also empower communities to take ownership of their local agricultural landscapes. As a leader in technological innovation, Northwestern State's CART will pioneer the use of drone technology in agriculture and disaster responsiveness. This forward-thinking approach will position Louisiana at the forefront of modern farming techniques and will enhance the state's capacity to respond to environmental challenges. And finally, a commitment to success is at the heart of all efforts at Northwestern State. CART will adhere to this commitment by producing undergraduate and graduate students with work-based experiences that prepare them to enter the workforce and make meaningful contributions to Louisiana's agricultural sector. CART's mission is deeply tied to improving the quality of life across Louisiana. This will require that CART works closely with regional economic development entities. This work will be done in multiple ways. Developing formalized partnerships through Memoranda of Understanding with organizations such as the Kane River Waterway Commission, the Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness, and Farm Bureau will tie students' learning to real-world projects with direct community impact in areas such as flood mapping, precision agricultural trials, and food insecurity solutions. With scaling outreach and applied learning, CART will coordinate public workshops, field days, and demonstration events that will engage local producers, schools, and citizens in sustainable farming practices, livestock management, and disaster readiness. We will expand workforce pipelines by aligning curricula into stackable credentials, from certificates to associate bachelor and graduate degrees, thereby producing skilled graduates ready to meet the agricultural and disaster response needs of Louisiana. Our driving innovation and securing of funding will position CART as a hub for interdisciplinary research, enabling faculty to pursue larger grants and industry-sponsored projects that will benefit the regional economy. With the establishment of Northwestern State's CART, the School of STEM, in concert with our Argo Lab, will dedicate faculty, staff, and students to reducing and reversing the growing food desert in our region and beyond by specifically attacking today's major threats to agricultural economics, reduce technological advancement in education, improper and insufficient disaster response and recovery efforts, and a lack of knowledge of or interest in sustainable agricultural practices. CART will transform Northwestern State University's existing strengths into a centralized driver of innovation, workforce readiness, and regional prosperity. Northwestern State's CART will serve as a strategic response to these agricultural challenges in several ways. CART will combat food insecurity by leading applied research and community engagement efforts to reverse food desert conditions through technological innovation and sustainable agricultural practices. CART will advance workforce development by offering work-based learning in the areas of environmental science, data science, material science, integrative biology, and applied engineering. Our graduates will be equipped to meet regional labor market demands in high-growth and high-wage fields. CART will support economic development by aligning education with industry needs. We will retain intellectual capital locally, reduce outmigration, and strengthen rural economies. CART will serve as a hub for innovation, entrepreneurship, and public-private partnerships. CART will deliver stackable credentials by offering micro-credentials and certifications in UAS and GIS, environmental science, and agricultural technologies, enabling flexible career pathways and upskilling opportunities for students and professionals. CART will meet statewide priorities. CART's focus areas of food security, water and soil quality, disaster response, and sustainable agriculture all align with Louisiana's workforce and economic development goals. The center will produce graduates ready to fill critical roles in agribusiness, environmental technology, and advanced manufacturing. Northwestern State School of STEM is comprised of five independent academic units, including the Departments of Biology and Microbiology, Engineering Technology, Mathematics, Physical Science, and Veterinary Technology. It offers two associate degrees with three concentrations of study, six bachelor degrees with 20 concentrations of study, and two post-baccalaureate certificates. Currently, there are approximately 500 Northwestern State students enrolled in these undergraduate programs, and approximately 135 graduates are produced each year for the past three-year average with these degrees. With a new Master of Science in STEM on the horizon, the School of STEM aims to expand its educational reach and enhance its research capabilities, which will build upon its existing strengths. We anticipate CART's activities and prominence to increase enrollment by 5% annually across all undergraduate programs and expect 10 graduate students per year enrolling in the MSN STEM program. By embedding stackable credentials, short-term micro-credentials, associate, bachelor, and graduate degrees, CART will ensure that graduates can enter the workforce at multiple levels and scale their skills as industries evolve. CART will address projected workforce demands in our state. Louisiana workforce projections identify a range of four- and five-star high-wage occupations directly tied to CART's academic programs. The annual openings in Louisiana for the occupations listed range in the 150 to 225 jobs in the region. In summary, CART will transform Northwestern State's existing strengths into a centralized driver of workforce and economic growth, preparing students for high-demand careers while positioning Louisiana to meet its future economic and workforce challenges. We have a bold but very achievable plan for CART implementation and growth. With this plan, CART will be a tremendous asset, not only to our institution and region, but to the entire state. And we hope to be seeing you all again really soon with a second proposal when we apply for CART to earn the designation of a Board of Regents Center for Excellence in Academic Programming. I thank you for your time, attention, and consideration.
Any question from members of the board? Wonderful. Supervisor Hogan, we'll make sure to track that, and then moving forward, provide you with that information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Always nice to have new individuals join the board with different questions and objectives. So thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And Supervisor Pierre, this concludes all items that is under consideration for academic and student affairs.
Okay. Thank you for the presentations. If no one requires any further clarification, I would like to recommend approval of items E1 through E5. May I have a motion and a second?
The move.
Moved by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Mr. Davison. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Thank you. That motion is approved. At this time, I'd like to take a moment of personal privilege and thank Dr. Martin Lamell and Grambling State University for the honor of the honorary doctorate. It is truly appreciated. So, thank you. And at this time, is there any other business to come before the committee? Hearing none, I think the next item is athletics.
Thank you, Supervisor Pierre. Supervisor Davison will now chair the athletic committee.
Thank you. We have six action items on the athletic committee agenda. Mr. Bruce Janey, Executive Director of Facilities, Risk Management, and Athletics, will provide the report. Bruce?
Other performance events. The complimentary ticket policy generally reflects the number of tickets per person, but the number of tickets distributed depends on how many people request them. Item F3 from Nichols, approval of a contract with Stephanie Sleckus, who's the head cross-country and track and field coach. F4 from Southeastern, approval of a contract with Michael Ream's head track and field coach. F5, University of Louisiana Lafayette, requesting approval of contract with Paul Burke-Halter, assistant football coach. And finally, F6, University of New Orleans, approval of a contract with Clayton O'Callaghan, who's the new head coach, men and women's track and field and cross-country coach. Those are all the consent items I have, Supervisor Davison.
Thank you, Bruce. Does any board member require clarification on any of these items? If not, I'd like to recommend approval of items F1 through F6. May I have a motion and a second?
Any motion?
So moved by Stevens, seconded by Dr. Pierre. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Any other questions or comments? That concludes athletics.
Thank you, Supervisor Davison. At this time, Supervisor Stokes will chair our audit committee.
Thank you. We have two items on the audit committee agenda today. One is a discussion item, report only, and one is a consent item. Mr. Fernando Cordova will provide a brief overview of both items.
Thank you, Supervisor Stokes. Chair Amero, members of the board, President Gallo, good morning. I'll go through both items, and then, of course, be happy to take any questions you have after covering both. First item is a discussion item. Item G1 is the University of Louisiana Report on Internal and External Audit Activity for the period of August 8th to October 2nd, 2025. The summary of internal and external reports completed by various auditors since the last board meeting has been made available to you and onboard. Also included in that audit summary are internal audits that are currently in progress and a follow-up timetable to ensure recommendations made in prior reports are implemented. This is a report only, and no action by the board is necessary. Item G2 is a consent item. It is the University of Louisiana System Request for Approval to Amend the Proposed Reporting Structure of the Internal Audit Function to Enhance Independence, Consistency, and Efficiency Across All Institutions. Under the revised structure, internal auditors located at each campus would report functionally to the Audit Committee of the Board of Supervisors through the System's Chief Audit Executive. And they would report administratively to the System's Chief Audit Executive rather than reporting administratively to the campus presidents. This change is designed to further align with professional standards and best practices and to ensure audit objectivity and oversight. I will also add that this is part of a long-term strategic initiative in the UL System Strategic Plan and will be implemented gradually. Additionally, the amended reporting structure contemplates revisions to the System's Internal Audit Charter and Audit Committee Charter to align with the new structure. Staff recommends that the System President, in coordination with the System Chief Audit Executive, be authorized to develop and implement the proposed structure, including the finalization of personnel assignments and operational details. That concludes the presentation for both items.
Thank you, Fernando. This item is reviewed by staff and is recommended for approval. If any member has any questions or wishes to discuss the item, please let us know. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Any comments from the public? If no one requires further clarification, consent agenda item and consent for approval of item G2. Motion by Myers, seconded by Busada. Busada? Is there any discussion? I'm sorry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Do we have any other business at this time? If not, that concludes the business of the audit committee.
Thank you. Chair Davison will also address items on facilities plan.
We have five action items on the facilities planning committee agenda. Mr. Janey is back to give us this report.
Thank you again, Supervisor Davison. We do have a couple of namings, and they are following board rule for the campuses that requested it. The first item is H1 from Grambling, requesting approval to amend its 2627 five-year capital capital outlay submission from August 2025 by adding a new project to construct an indoor athletic facility. GSU currently has approximately $6.7 million available for this project. It's going to be built on their campus. The addition to the GSU capital outlay plan will allow the institution to expand on that program to build a state-of-the-art indoor athletic facility. I wanted to point out that after our August 28th board meeting, it was discovered that capital outlay approved by the board was required to proceed with this full project totaling $18.7 million, creating a very time-sensitive situation. Item H2 is a request from Grambling to obtain approval from the Board of Regents for an ACT 959 project for this indoor athletic facility. The project's scope includes construction of a covered 36,000-square-foot facility, including a 50-yard turf football field that can be used for all sports. The estimated project cost for this portion is approximately $6.7 million and represents a major investment enhancement at Grambling for student athlete development while positioning GSU as a leader among HBCUs. Due to the approvals required before the project may go up before the Architect Selection Board and the timing of upcoming meetings, the project will go before the Joint Legislative Committee on the Budget in November, and an architect will be selected in January 2026, continued on your approval today. Item H3 is from McNeese. They are also requesting approval to amend their five-year capital outlay plan that was submitted in August by combining two projects into one project, therefore decreasing the cost, increasing the cost estimate for one project, and adding one new project. The projects are as follows. The Burton Business Center, by combining two previous projects, where it was saved approximately $4 million anticipated. The Cowboy Stadium has an increase of $16.5 million. And finally, there's a new project for Bulbar Auditorium renovation that adds $16.4 million to the capital outlay. When submitting in August 2025, certain information from designers and consultants was not available in time to have accurate estimates and proper information affecting decisions regarding phasing and scheduling. Item H4, Nichols, named the first floor multipurpose room, which is formerly the sentry room at John L. Guidry Stadium, to Dr. Neil J. and Janet B. Mackay Legacy Center. The requested name shall remain in the space until December of 2040, unless otherwise extended by mutual agreement of all parties and, of course, pending upon our board approval. Finally, H5, University of Louisiana Monroe, to name the Malone Stadium Home Radio Booth, the Dr. Frank Hoffman Radio Booth. This naming is for the useful life of the facility. These are all the consent items I have, Supervisor Davison. Presidents of staff or in the audience, as well as the outside legal counsel, should the board have any questions.
Thank you, Bruce. Any board member require further clarification on any of these items? If not, I'd like to recommend approval of items H1 through H5. Can I have a motion and a second? Move, Hogan. Salim, second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right. Any other questions or comments from the board or the public?
Supervisor Davison, I wanted to talk about our capital outlay visits that we made to eight of our campuses this year. I wanted to point out for all eight of them, we had tremendous people who attended. We had our legislators, we had board members, we had representatives from the House and Fiscal Section, et cetera. And somebody wanted to take time and compliment is Maria, because she attended all of the visits, and I think at this time, she wanted to tell us how much she enjoyed the visits and lessons learned from them.
Thank you so much. It has been an incredible opportunity to see each campus across the system. I loved learning more about each university. And during each of my visits, I did take the time to talk with the students and see how they felt, and they're all really excited. So, thank you so much.
And I wanted to say that Maria set a record. She is the first student board member since I've been doing this to attend all of the visits. And I mean, she had to travel, stay overnight, and she still did very good on her schoolwork, I understand.
Thank you, Bruce. Thank you, Maria, for making us look good. Any other business before this committee? That concludes facilities.
Thank you. Mr. Busada now will chair the Finance Committee.
We have six agenda items on the Finance Committee agenda. Mr. Eddie Mesh, Vice President for Business and Finance, and Ms. Ashley McIntyre, Assistant Vice President for Financial Reporting and Analysis, will provide the report.
Thank you, Mr. Busada. Item I1, Louisiana Tech University's Request for Approval to Proceed with an Alternative Finance Capital Improvement through Innovative Student Facilities Incorporated, as authorized by Louisiana Revised Statute 17:3361. Louisiana Tech University, through its affiliated nonprofit Innovative Student Facilities Incorporated, plans to finance upgrades to its aging utility infrastructure by discontinuing its outdated cogeneration power plant and connecting campus facilities to local utility providers. The project involves a lease arrangement where the university would lease land to the affiliated nonprofit, and then the nonprofit would lease the completed facilities back to the university. To fund the project, the nonprofit would use revenue bonds issued through the Louisiana Local Government, Environmental Facilities, and Community Development Authority. The debt is not expected to exceed $17 million. The bonds would be secured through a facilities lease payments made by the university to the nonprofit. General university revenues excluding state-appropriated funds and other legally restricted income would secure the debt. The board and the university would not pledge its full faith in credit or property as bond security. Approval from the Board of Supervisors is being sought to move forward. If approved to proceed, the university will request the board's approval of the execution of the leases in a future meeting of the board. I2, McNeese State University's Request for Approval to Charge a Flat Rate of $1,400 Per Credit Hour for Courses Required for the Proposed Post-Baccalaureate Certificate in LNG Engineering. Louisiana's share of the United States LNG exports grew from 50% to 61% between 2021 and 2023, making Southwest Louisiana a national industry hub with multiple major terminals operating or under construction. Despite its growth, no formal LNG engineering credential exists. Training is limited to costly, short-term, non-credit courses, which cost from $4,000 to $6,000. McNeese's proposed 15-hour post-baccalaureate certificate LNG engineering, which would be the first academic program of its kind, would provide structured, industry-relevant training for early-career and transitioning engineers. With strong employer support and a competitive $1,400 per credit hour rate, the program would address workforce needs in the region employing over 2,400 LNG professionals. I3, Southeastern Louisiana University's Request for Approval to Establish the Dr. Brian R. O'Callaghan Endowed Chair and the Brian R. O'Callaghan Endowed Professship in Mathematics. In 1989, the Louisiana Legislature created the Louisiana Education Quality Support Fund, referred to as AG, which provides the grants to be awarded upon receipt of private donations for the establishment of endowed professorships, first-generation scholarships, graduate scholarships, and endowed chairs. The law further requires that the appropriate management board authorize the establishment of such endowments prior to submission to the Board of Regents for matching funds. Southeastern requests the establishment of the Brian R. O'Callaghan Endowed Chair in Mathematics and the Brian O'Callaghan Endowed Professship in Mathematics.
Item I4 is the University of Louisiana Systems' Financial Status of Alternatively-Financed Projects for the Fiscal Year Ended June 30, 2025. In your materials, and on the screen, you'll see all of the financial reports I'll be discussing. Alternatively-financed projects are facility-construction projects that are financed and constructed by campus-affiliated nonprofit corporations, like foundations and facility corporations. Universities lease their land to the nonprofits, and the nonprofits finance and construct the facilities, and then lease the completed facilities back to the universities for their use. In many cases, the nonprofits will incur debt to finance these projects, and campus facility lease payments finance the bond payment. Semi-annually, campuses report the financial status of these projects to the system. Campuses report results of operations and debt coverage ratios of their projects. A debt coverage ratio of 1.0 would indicate that operations funded just enough to make debt payments with no excess funds, or it could be that actual expenses are reimbursed by other funds. These projects are reported as either student housing projects or non-student housing projects. This first slide shows the financial activity for student housing projects for each university for fiscal year '25. In total, campuses reported student housing revenues of approximately $86 million, expenditures of $28 million, annual debt obligations of $36 million, and a debt coverage ratio of 1.6 before considering subordinated costs. The next slide shows information for those individual housing projects. As of June 30, 2025, the total principal debt payments outstanding was almost $413 million, and total interest outstanding is about $183 million, for a total outstanding debt amount of $551 million. Campuses did not express any concern regarding their individual student housing projects. The next slide shows the financial activity for the non-housing projects for fiscal year '25. twenty-five. Non-housing projects would include student unions, parking garages, recreational facilities, athletic facilities, and similar projects. In total, campuses reported non-housing revenues of approximately twenty-nine million, expenditures of nine million, annual debt obligations of twelve million, and a debt coverage ratio of one point six regardless of the subordinated costs. Campuses did not express any concern regarding their individual non-student housing projects. All management certifications are available for review in the system office. If individual university reports are needed, they are available upon request and this is a report only and no action by the board is necessary. The next item is I five and it's the University of Louisiana Systems' report of fiscal year twenty-five, fourth quarter financial reports and ongoing concerns, ongoing assurances. We also have slides of the financial information being discussed for this agenda item. The first slide is comparing operating budget revenues versus actual revenues. For fiscal year twenty-five, the system recognized ninety-nine point eight percent of available budgeted revenues and expenses for a total of nine hundred and fifty-eight million. Campuses collected ninety-nine point six percent of general registration fees and one hundred and thirteen percent of non-resident fees. The next slide is comparing budgeted operating expenses versus actual expenses by function. And as you can see, there are no large variances to note on this report. The next slide is also comparing budgeted, budgeted operating expense by actual, but this report is showing the expense by object and there are also no variances, large variances among these categories. The next slide is a prior to current year comparison of actual operating revenues. The system's total operating budget increased by about nine point four million from last year. Total student fees increased slightly by four point five million and total student, total self-generated revenues increased by eleven million. And I'm sorry y'all are going to get tired of hearing me say the next slide. But the next slide is a prior to current year comparison of actual operating expenses by function. Research expense decreased by twenty-one point six million due to the one-time research funding ULL received last year, but not this year. Operations and maintenance of plant expense increased by eighteen million, mostly because of the one-time supplemental appropriations received. Campuses' operating budgets were able to absorb more operating costs during fiscal year twenty-five and rely less on other funds as was necessary in the prior year. There were also increases in Office of Risk Management insurance premiums. Other expense increased by six million, mostly due to supplemental appropriations received by Grambling for the purpose of constructing their new athletic facility complex. The funds were provided late in fiscal year twenty-five and transferred to other funds for use when construction begins. The next slide is also prior to current year comparison of expenses but by object. Related benefits expense decreased by thirteen million, which is mostly attributed to a decrease in our percentage for required employer contributions for both the lasers and teachers' pension plans. Operating services expense increased by fourteen million and this is also due to those supplemental appropriations, allowing the operating budget to absorb more costs in fiscal year twenty-five rather than relying upon other funds. And it's also related to the increase in the Office of Risk Management premiums. The next slide includes the results of the system's auxiliary and athletic operations, showing the revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance for fiscal year twenty-five. Revenues totaled two hundred and seventy million, expenses were three hundred and thirty-three million, and net transfers in were thirty-three million, resulting in an overall current year operating deficit of thirty-one million, which has improved by about sixteen million from last year's current year deficit of forty-seven million. The resulting ending fund balance is a fifty-four million dollar deficit. On the next slide, I've also provided this information in detail by campus. Although the current year deficit improved by sixteen million, our system's fiscal year twenty-five ending fund balance for auxiliaries and athletics grew from twenty-three million to fifty-four million. This combined fifty-four million dollar deficit is comprised of an athletics deficit of one hundred and forty-six million and a positive fund balance of ninety-two million for auxiliaries. The next slide includes two graphs that compare athletic and auxiliary revenues and expense trends. And this is before any transfers are made to or from either fund from fiscal year twenty-two to fiscal year twenty-five. Athletics is on the left and auxiliaries is on the right. In both graphs, the blue line represents revenues while the orange line represents expense. These graphs illustrate a contrasting trend between auxiliaries and athletics. While auxiliary revenues are steadily increasing and sufficiently enough to cover their related expense, athletic operations continue to move in the opposite direction. Athletic revenues are declining while expenses continue to rise, which is a trajectory that is unsustainable and requires timely strategic attention. The next slide shows each campus's current year athletic deficits for both fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five. Overall, the athletic deficit improved slightly by about two million from forty-one to thirty-nine million, which indicates a slight trend in the right direction. However, as illustrated by these reports, auxiliary and other institutional revenue reserves continue to be depleted to cover the athletic deficits.
The next slide shows non-operating funds. Non-operating funds represent the portion of the institutional financial activity outside of the operating fund. These funds are categorized as restricted or unrestricted. Restricted non-operating funds include statutory dedications, state, federal, and private grants, restricted student fees, and other restricted sources. Unrestricted non-operating funds include auxiliary enterprises, athletics, and other unrestricted sources. The fourth quarter indicates some institutions continue to rely on non-operating funds to support their operating budgets. This support occurs through direct transfers into the, into the operating fund, shifting expenditures from the operating fund to non-operating funds, or charging operating fund-type expenses directly to non-operating funds to balance the budget. The report also shows that non-operating funds are being used to cover athletic deficits. Because both operating athletic deficits depend on limited number, unlimited non-operating resources, institutional reserves are being depleted, placing campuses in financially, financially unsustainable positions. The document titled Non-Operating Funds provides detailed campus non-operating fund information. The report shows four campuses reporting non-operating fund revenues falling short of expenditures requiring use of reserves. Additionally, the report indicates three campuses had negative unrestricted reserves at year-end and one campus reported a total negative reserve balance. Campuses in deficit positions will need to reduce expenditures or generate additional revenues, particularly in athletic operations, to lessen reliance on reserves and achieve long-term financial sustainability. This concludes the FY twenty-twenty-five fourth quarter report.
The next item is I six and it's the University of Louisiana Systems' Discussion of Policy and Procedures Memorandum Financial Warning Policy. While the trends just discussed highlights areas of concern, they also underscore the importance of proactive financial oversight. In response, the system has developed a new financial warning trigger policy that is a key step in strengthening our ability to monitor and respond to these emerging fiscal risks. The policy establishes financial warning triggers that may exist at our universities to prompt system-level inquiry and oversight. It establishes procedures for monitoring and detecting those triggers, procedures for conducting inquiries and assessments of triggers, and procedures for implementing remedial actions and follow-up. The policy has been reviewed by board members, system staff, university finance teams, university presidents, and our legal advisors and is effective as of today. But we will continue to review the policy and make any amendments to it as needed. This is a discussion item only and no action by the board is necessary.
This could please the financial agenda items, Mr. Sal.
I have a question. So yeah, I had, and it doesn't require any action. That's why my amendment to it doesn't need to be discussed.
Yes, ma'am, we can if you'd like.
I just was asking to amend the policy so that the Audit Committee could be added to the finance, to the list of committees that would be notified of these warnings when they come in from the universities. And I also wanted to escalate the, the trigger for using non-recurring revenues to pay for recurring or operating expense. And I understand that, that, you know, that there are occasions where that is done and it's kind of normalized, but there are also occasions where that's been a real issue and I just want to make sure that that's brought to everybody's attention. So I thought that was going to be something we were going to have to vote on, but since it's not something that has to be adopted by the committee, I'm correct in assuming that I just wanted to go on record saying that.
It's a PPM. We've made notations of your comments.
Perfect.
The policy will evolve over time and so we will add those changes to the policy going forward.
Perfect. I appreciate it. Thank you, everyone.
And for benefit of Supervisor Stokes and all the board members, that's why we've been circulating this document for at least a couple of months now so that we would be able to not only get input from members of the board of supervisors, but also with the campuses so that when we get to the point of a final version that it would be, you know, inclusive of your particular input and thoughts. So I very much appreciate your input. I know Dr. Noble had some, had some thoughts and input early on. So again, I, we appreciate all the input that we've gotten to do this.
Perfect, thank you.
Can I ask Dr. Henderson to come speak on the first item and give us a little more explanation about what we're doing on that steam facility?
Mr. President Chairman, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak on this. This is a, we think, an extraordinary opportunity for our institution. Our institution historically has relied on a cogeneration plant to generate electricity for a large portion of the institution, also a steam generation plant that distributes steam to heat and cool a significant number of our facilities. Those come with extraordinary cost. The generator, the turbine that generates electricity has an eight hundred and fifty-thousand dollar annual maintenance contract on it. That maintenance contract increases about four percent every year. The steam generation plant, you either generate steam or you don't generate steam. There's no governing the amount of steam you generate. All excess steam is released into the environment. We spend four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars a year on chemicals to treat that steam. We also have about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of hard maintenance costs associated with this system. Electricity and steam are distributed through the institution through an eighty-year-old infrastructure that's underground, required at least twenty-five million dollars to update. We are proposing to use a portion to discontinue that approach to our operation, to use a portion of the hard cost savings to generate through a bond initiative about fourteen and a half million dollars to bring our twenty-one facilities that still rely on this system up to modern systems of heating and air and electricity. It'll have generated an annual cash savings of four hundred thousand dollars a year of hard costs, not speculated cost of hard cost reduction, not speculating any energy cost savings, not expecting labor cost savings. This is just removing the hard maintenance costs, the generator, the contract, and the chemicals for the steam. We retire these bonds over twenty years. We would eliminate a significant amount of risk of a catastrophic failure of both our electrical distribution and our steam distribution and get us into a, a modern system of heating and cooling our facilities, would also reduce a significant portion of our deferred maintenance. The request today is for us to pursue this and to come back to you in a future meeting with all of the documents associated with this. It is done through our Innovative Student Facilities Incorporated, which is a nonprofit that does our housing and other aspects of our campus operations. So it is a, it's a pretty straightforward approach, but I'd be happy to answer any questions associated with that.
Anybody have any questions?
The only thing I wondered, it, it, it kind of reminds me of a utility deal that was done for a couple of the campuses, but this one doesn't necessarily include an infusion of cash for the university.
No, ma'am, there's no infusion of cash whatsoever. All of the bond proceeds would go to both the infrastructure project or some capitalized interest associated with that. There's also a cost associated with the turbine contract, but most of that will be mitigated by sale of the turbine. That's something to be considered in the future, but we'll look into that as well.
And so when you come back, you'll have a lot more detail on it before we proceed.
All the documents.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, this is, this is a broader question, not for, I don't believe for Dr. Henderson, but of those other energy projects that are alternatively financed, that are going on at campuses in the system, I guess how, what is the status of those projects? Like how would we as a board or system know whether these deals actually end up producing the gains that are promised? Not to, this is not a you, Dr. Henderson, but just sort of broadly, how would the system know whether the, you know, the opportunity actually yields in the way in which it's described or sold on the front end?
The only project that I'm aware of that type that we've entered is a UNO project and there, there is no reporting back whether the project is functioning and benefiting the institution as promised. Once it's approved by the board.
That's it?
We don't have subsequent reporting, but we can, we can.
Yeah, the, in item, I believe, four, the listing of alternatively financed projects, there were housing and then there was non-housing. Is the UNO project that list of non-housing projects?
I don't think we've added that one. We haven't required reporting. The ones that historically have been reporting are housing projects, but if the non-housing, it's parking garages. Those, those are traditionally through bonded debt and in this case, it's not bonded debt. It's financed through that contract. And so, but in the future, I mean, I think that's a fair point that we could get information from UNO to report back to the board to see if it's achieving the savings that was promised when the board approved the project.
Well, how do you, if you don't have that, then how do you measure success? Like how would the university itself measure success of the project?
Right. I think, I think we should. Normally in the past, it was based on bonded debt. It was very straightforward and so we included it in those reports.
So long as you can pay the bond debt, then that's the, that's success? I mean, as long as you can pay the debt?
Right. But essentially it is an obligation of the university to pay for the cost and it's achieved through energy savings that they would fulfill their side of the contract. But again, since it wasn't bonded debt, we haven't included it, but I, but I think it's, it's a good idea that we do that. Thank you.
Let me ask you a question. Doc, what happens to that old existing equipment? Y'all just get rid of it, dump it? I mean, is there any cleanup costs associated with, with all these modern environmental requirements?
Yes, sir, there's, there's certainly decommissioning costs that are built into the estimates we've provided. The one asset that is marketable will be the turbine and that is a considerable market associated with that, but the rest of it is included in the cost.
Any other questions?
Yes. Dr. Henderson, as respects the relationship with the city, for the power that you use with the city, can you expand and update the board on how this relates to maybe our previous discussions of decommissioning and potentially how this interfaces with your relationship with the city of Ruston?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I admitted that from the first part. This is, this project coincides with a project from the city of Ruston to up their capacity to provide electricity to our campus. They have a grant to establish a new substation that will be adjacent to our campus to generate electricity for us. We have gotten capital outlay dollars that are going into what's called new switchgear that allows us to switch between various feeds of electricity coming to the campus. So it gives us some redundancy, gives us some, certainly some stabilization of the energy. The city of Ruston is certainly is municipal municipality that sells electricity to its customers. It has one of the lowest rates in the state of Louisiana. It will be renegotiating those rates in 2027 and of course, we will have to negotiate our rates with the city of Ruston. And those will be part of the documents that we bring forward. It is certainly a much more stable prospect for us. Certainly our, most of our energy costs are reliant on an annual purchase of natural gas. The volatility in natural gas led to a near fiscal years 2022 and 2023. The volatility in natural gas led to a near fiscal years 2022 and 2023, a $6 million unexpected increase in energy costs for the campus, which was substantial, almost a 50% increase. We expect to escape some of that volatility and be able to plan much more effectively for our utilization of energy with the city. The rate with the city would be negotiated on a five-year term associated with their purchase of, of electricity as well.
Right. Maybe Eddie, both Eddie and Jim, as respects the proposed bond, do we anticipate we'll have reserve requirements? And are we positioned? Do we have the, the cash available to reserve for that?
Yes, sir. There's a maintenance reserve that's associated with this for the, for the equipment and we should have sufficient reserves associated with this.
So we won't be buying alternative reserve options?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Just for clarification, so there is no maintenance contract with this, with this process? There's, is no contracts going forward?
No, sir. The only contract associated was with a third party would be the lease arrangements between the university and the university's facilities corporation. There's no maintenance contract. There's no vendor that brought this to us. This is us looking at $1.6 million in cash outlays that go to nothing that can, is reliable or sustainable for the institution going forward. And replacing that, and by the way, that 1.6 million, which escalates, is in perpetuity. If we spent the $25 million to upgrade the distribution system and to do the other upgrades associated with, with both the turbine and the steam generation infrastructure, we would still have to pay $1.6 million a year on this. So we're reducing a debt in perpetuity and replacing it with a smaller debt for 20 years. The maintenance of this will be done by our in-house personnel who have expertise. We will have personnel associated with the steam generation, electricity generation, infrastructure that will be freed from that and can be repurposed across the campus. We're not projecting labor savings associated with this. It's just those hard costs that I mentioned earlier. So no, sir, there is no contract.
So this is basically an in-house deal?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Unlike some of the other deals we've seen.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
Hopefully a greener solution also.
Oh, 100%. Anytime you're spending $400,000 a year on chemicals to make steam safe, you would expect it to be a much more economic, environmentally friendly approach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on any of the other items?
I, I just wondered, you know, I, I know I'm not alone. I mean, but the, the athletics deficits, I mean, do we have a tech or something trying to figure out what to do about this?
So Dr. Noble and I, as the athletics chair have been, obviously he's not been available in recent time, but, but there are plans underway to, to do just that. So you, you'll be hearing more about that and hopefully we'll get Dr. Noble back in good, good health. And, and so, but yes, that, those, those plans are underway.
Good. I know, I know all of us are very excited to hear about them and concerned, you know, so thank you.
Yes.
There's no other questions. I'd like to recommend approval of items I one through I three. May I have a motion and a second?
I'll make the motion.
Motion from Mr. Saleem.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Saleem is second. All right.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Any comments from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Next item is personnel.
Thank you Supervisor Basada. Chair Saleem will now conduct the Personnel Committee.
We have four items on the Personnel Committee agenda for consideration. Dr. Marcus Jones, System Chief Operating Officer will now present the items.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Saleem, Chair Romero, President Gallo, and Board Members. Item J one, Grams approval to appoint Mr. Max Ferguson as Chief Experience and Digital Strategy Officer effective September the first, 2025. Item J two, University of Louisiana at Lafayette's approval to appoint Dr. Diane Olivier as interim provost and vice president for academic affairs effective August first, 2025. Item J three, University of Louisiana at Monroe's approval to appoint Dr. Michelle McCann as provost and vice president for academic affairs effective November the first, 2025. And item J four, University of New Orleans's approval to appoint Ms. Arlene Weely as interim vice president for finance and administration effective August 20th, 2025. These are all the campus requests from Sir Saleem.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Is there anyone here from the various universities that want to speak on behalf of these suggested appointments? No? Okay. Dr. Jones, is this new role you're now in, is this a promotion?
I think so.
Thank you for your presentation. If no one requires further clarification, I would like to recommend approval of items J one through J four. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved Davison.
By Mr. Basada, seconded by Mr. Myers. All in favor? Any opposed? Are there any questions or comments from the board or any comments from the public? Conclusive. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Saleem. President Gallo will now present his report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Campus and System Office Personnel actions were made available in onboard for your review. Staff has reviewed all these requests and recommends approval. Are there any questions about any of those personnel actions? If not, Mr. Chairman, I would ask for a motion and second to approve those personnel actions.
We could have a motion and second. Moved by Stevens, seconded by Myers. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Members. One of our System Office Personnel actions included the addition of an employee. We'd like to introduce and welcome Sharissa Felder, who's joined us this past Monday. She has a background in state government, having worked at CPRA as well as Department of Natural Resources and Secretary of State's Office. So she brings a lot of experience in, in the area of governmental operations. And so I'd ask Sharissa to stand and we welcome her to our team. And her role is Operations Support Specialist. Next, we have a proposed revision to Board Bylaw Section Two Officers and Election. Since the August board meeting, this proposed bylaw revision was submitted for your review. This change was made necessary to, to align with legislation last year where the governor now appoints the board chair, hence the only officer for election is our board vice chair. At this time, we'll need a motion and second to approve this revision, Mr. Chairman.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Stevens.
Second.
Second by Saleem. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Members. The next item, proposed revision to Board Rule Chapter Four, Finance and Business, Section Five, Student Fees, Room Deposit. The next revision is really a cleanup matter to the board rule referring to room deposits. This rule has become outdated and obsolete because of specific language and needs to be made current. At this time, I would ask for a motion and second to approve this, this change.
Moved by Pierre, second. By Basada. Any questions? All in favor? All right. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Members. The next two items are settlements that Mr. Brandon DeQueer, legal counsel, will, will give us an update on.
Good morning. Good morning. You have two settlements in front of you, one involving Noah Hansard and the other one involving Jason Lenz. Both of these were excessive. The universities are not contributing in any way to the settlement. However, there are some minor repairs that we've agreed to take, undertake primarily with.
Why don't you turn that one off and maybe go over to the other table?
Laptop. I put them behind me. We'll give it a try. Both, both of them do not require any contribution from the universities. There are some minor repairs that will be done primarily with some sidewalk improvements that were already scheduled to be done and have just been elevated up on the list for, for consideration. And the ones that you and I were already discussed, I guess about two or three meetings ago by Mr. Litoff when they talked about the tow tank being now accessible inside of the named building. So those have been completed and I would ask for approval on these.
We need a motion and a second to approve those, Mr. Chairman.
You could just make a motion to approve the two settlements in Gloubo.
Moved by Stevens, seconded by Davison. Any questions? Yes, Supervisor Saleem. And do we have a board policy, a said board policy that deals with these kind of issues? Or are we just going case by case basis on this?
Well, Supervisor Saleem, these, our campuses each year develop their capital outlay, you know, projects. And so these in particular, you know, dealt with facilities accessibility issues. So those, those are being addressed on a, on a, on a yearly basis.
No, I'm not talking about the financial portion. What I'm referencing is, is that each university has a policy dealing with these types, sexual type lawsuits. Okay? Does the board have a policy in place that deals with, with requirements or what we expect of the individual universities?
If, if I may, or Member Saleem, these were accessibility suits. One was brought by an individual who is actually just a citizen. He's not even a student and or member at the university and attended a function in one of the historic buildings on SLU's campus, which had retrofits and other things done primarily to preserve the historic nature of that building and also to try and accommodate the accessibility. The other one at U N O, the individual that was involved in that suit was, you know, non-paralegal. He was, you know, able to move around and did not have accessibility at the time he started the program. It was only later during his attrition through school that he suffered an injury. And then he was still in the naval architecture program. And we had never had a student that was wheelchair-bound attempting to access the tow tank. And then nor had they constructed catwalks and other things to try and facilitate that. So those were pretty much outliers, but as it relates to the nature of both of these suits being accessibility suits, there are policies across all of the institutions that are in alignment with accessibility standards, whether it's bathroom requirements, handrails, guards, things of that nature for this type of suit. So those are reviewed pretty frequently as it relates to any adjustments or changes in, in accessibility standards. And I, I don't know if that's answering directly what you're looking for.
Thank you. All in favor? Proposed? Motion passes.
Okay. I'm proud to share that our Chief Operating Officer and Senior Vice President for Legal Affairs, Dr. Marcus Jones, was recently inducted into the Northwestern State University's Long Purple Line, the highest honor bestowed upon Northwestern State alumni. The recognition celebrates his more than two decades of leadership, teaching, and service in higher education, including his tenure as Northwestern State's 20th President and his ongoing impact across the UL system. Dr. Jones exemplifies the excellence and dedication that define our universities and we're incredibly proud to celebrate this well-deserved honor with him. So, Dr. Jones, congratulations once again, so. On our strategic plan and campus visits, as we discussed at our August meeting, over the past few weeks, we've been making our way to our institutions to visit and present the system's strategic plan. We've had a great reception at each stop and, and we've had great comments and, and questions from members of faculty, staff, and the community and students as well. The collaboration has been great and I certainly want to commend the presidents who have been a part of these and, and the teams on all of our campuses that have been a part of this. And we look forward to completing the rest of them by the second week in November, I believe it is. So again, I want to thank everyone for, for assisting in, in that. Don't forget that our Title IX Summit is planned for November 6th and 7th with sessions being held on Gramm State University and Louisiana Tech campuses. The agenda for the two-day summit will be available onboard. So please refer to that and contact Dr. Erica Calle if you would like to attend. I'd also like to just commend Dr. Calle in, in a recent conversation with, with members of the, the Senate, primarily Senator Barrow and Senator, and her name is escaping me right now, that is really involved in Title IX. Erica, help me out. And Senator Mizell, that's right, who commended Dr. Calle and our system for the proactive stance we've taken and, and all of the work that has gone into planning and continuing to host these Title IX summits. So I'd, I'd like for us to recognize and give Dr. Calle a rousing round of applause, please. Over the summer, our board members completed the annual board self-evaluation with a 100% participation rate. I want to thank each of you for taking the time to reflect honestly on our performance and effectiveness as a governing body. The purpose of the evaluation is not only to assess where we are today, but to help us identify specific areas where we can continue to grow and strengthen our work together. You may view the results from the self-evaluation under the onboard resources tab. The results will be used to guide our priorities for board improvement in the coming year. Our 2026 board development efforts will be devoted to building our strengths and addressing areas that need greater attention, ensuring that we remain a high-performing, engaged, and forward-thinking board. And I'd also just like to add, and especially for Mr. Hogan, our new member, our, our campuses need these surveys done to make it a part of their accreditation process each time they go through it. And so again, I just want to thank all of you for your willingness to take the time to, to do these, the, the surveys. In alignment with PPM 74 and the U.S. Department of Justice's final rule, the UL system has launched a new digital accessibility policy to ensure our online spaces are accessible and compliant. To support our member institutions, we're hosting webinars focused on practical accessibility skills. Participation has been strong with more than 900 registrants across our last two sessions. We'll continue that momentum with two more in November, one on November 12th and the Southwest ADA Center and another on November 19th led by our Accessibility Coordinator, Alyssa Coats, and Campus LMS leads. Office move. Want to share that the UL System Office is on the move as a part of the complete remodel ultimately of the Clayburn Building where we are. There are updates that will be taking place and they're scheduling these and starting with the seventh floor where, where we are. So we will be required to relocate our offices to the Iberville Building, which is located on the corner of North and Fourth Streets. We'll call it home for about 18 months while the work is, is being conducted and we'll be very excited to return back to the seventh floor after that, that work. and we'll be very excited to return back to the seventh floor after that, that work is done. We will continue to hold the board meetings here at the Clayburn Building, but our, our offices will be, will be located at the, at the Iberville. We're not necessarily looking forward to it, but I want to give a shout out to Ann McKissin and, and everyone for meeting with all the technology people with FPNC, with the movers and everyone. We'll actually move the week of November the 10th, I believe. And so be patient and bear with us as we move to our temporary area. Mr. Chairman, I believe that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, President Gallo. I'd like to once again thank Ron for joining us. I look forward to your contributions and leadership. We know that you bring a, a great amount of experience in areas that we continue to prioritize as growth areas for future students, current students, and our businesses who have a need to employ our students. As you begin your service, you'll serve on the audit, facilities planning, and finance committees, and look forward to, again, your participation there. I want to thank again Maria for attending all of the capital outlay meetings that were available to her. I want to congratulate her for seeing every single campus site visit along with Bruce's comments earlier. I think it's a great, a grand accomplishment. That level of engagement and participation with fellow student leaders throughout our system does help prioritize a focus of where the state invests dollars to enrich their experiences while here as students. Bruce, thank you for arranging this morning's live ethics session. It was a great help. Any of you who were unable to attend obviously have an online option available and just need to complete it by the end of the year. Carol, in regards to commencements, Carol emailed us a list of upcoming campus graduations. I want to encourage each of you to try to attend at least one that might fit your schedule. It's a very good experience and really is, I think, why we serve, just to see those young individuals cross that threshold and go on to the next stage, and in many cases, return to gain a higher degree. At some point prior to our December meeting, the nominating, nominating committee would meet to discuss a recommendation for next, next year's board vice chair. Keith Myers, Steve Davison, and Liz Pierre will serve on that committee, and that meeting will take place somewhere, somewhere right before our next meeting in December. We are scheduled to meet December the 11th. I want to remind each of you that we'll be meeting at Nichols. And I want to thank Dr. Clune for hosting us in Thibodeau. I think that we look forward to a great opportunity to visit your campus. It's always been a great experience. You've always had such a hospitable team of leaders, and I know the food is generally very good down there. Remember that we'll have a board development session scheduled today on the seventh floor in the System Office. I want to encourage everyone to attend. Timing should not endure past an hour. This year, this meeting will be in regards to contracts. If there's no other business before us, if I could have a motion to adjourn.
Does board development include packing up for the move? If so, I've got an obligation somewhere.
The secret is out. That's exactly, we've got tape and boxes waiting on you, Supervisor.
Gallo was hoping you could fix his thermostat, but I think he'll excuse you from the move. Motion to adjourn, Basada?